Ann-Louise for LA This Week.
This project will eventually connect to a 102-mile trail system in the nation's second-largest urban area. That's according to the LA River Project Bureau of Engineering. And whether it's wanting a bike path in your neighborhood or wanting potholes fixed, new mayor Eric Garcetti wants to hear about it, and he's not waiting around. In fact, he's knocking on doors and asking, "What do you need from City Hall?"
Is the trash pick-up good? Is there a lot of litter or anything like that?
Too busy to make a trip to City Hall? No worries, Mayor Eric Garcetti will come to you.
There's a lot of litter at the park functions. You know, every once in a while, they have functions on weekends, and there is a lot of litter.
Garcetti and councilmember Mike Bonin, together with volunteers, knocked on doors in the Venice community on a Saturday earlier this month to connect residents with city services as well as to hear their concerns.
How long you lived here?
Um, two months.
Oh, welcome. Where were you before?
Uh, Washington DC.
Oh, welcome to LA.
But before the walk, the mayor and councilmember addressed the large assembly of volunteers gathered at the Oakwood Recreation Center on the importance of this exercise.
It's a pretty simple, but very effective way to make sure that Los Angeles isn't run by 1 percent. And I don't mean that by the wealth 1 percent, but by 1 percent of activists, but that 100 percent of Angelenos feel like this government works for them, listens to them. What we're saying here today is Los Angeles is open to you. Los Angeles is open to our neighborhood.
And with that, the group headed out, knocking on the doors of homes, apartments, businesses, and churches before meeting back at the rec center for a debriefing to hear residents' feedback.
That it's a great place to be, high-quality of life. Flipside was, you know, with that comes other pressures, and I heard at least two times folks saying they don't know if they can afford to stay here.
A lot of people are concerned about the trash. There's a lot of renters here.
The neighbors complained basically about the stop sign in this street and a lot of nuisance.
No matter the issue, the mayor and councilmen say they will be taken seriously. As for residents, don't be surprised if the mayor comes knocking at your door. Some middle-school kids are also taking the proactive approach to solve a global problem. They're tackling the issue of hunger by starting with changes at their own school. Anna Marcos takes a look.
A tree made of Styrofoam trays? Well, more on that later. But one thing is clear: some students at Thomas Star King Middle School are on a mission to help Mother Earth cut down on waste. Their project, 37 Degrees From Hunger, packs a double punch, as it helps cut food waste at their school and feeds the hungry.
Hopefully, this can be a footprint for other schools, because even a kid can make a difference.
Councilmember Tom LaBange honored the students for their project, which was born out of a class assignment in their Environmental Studies Magnet School program.
This is so special that the thought comes from the students. Get up here.
I make them look locally in their community, within walking distance, and try to solve an environmental issue.
The students didn't have far to look: their own school cafeteria.
There's a big food waste in the school. The trash cans is full of food that's not even opened. So we decided to, what's, um, start a project called 37 Degrees From Hunger.
The students started collecting all the unopened milk cartons, the uneaten fruit and other food items, and donating them to local churches and food banks. They have even bought a huge refrigerator to store the food in.
Especially the milk's important, because I get asked every week, "Do you have milk?" And most of the time, we don't. So having this resource is really good.
But ecology doesn't just stop here for these students. Last year, they got the LA Unified School District to ban Styrofoam lunch trays at all its campuses. This pile here is a sample of just one day's worth of Styrofoam trays that this school used in the past.
All the Styrofoam that's being used, it was just being thrown away, not recycled properly, because when you walk out, all these kids are just going, and right into the trash can. No recycle, no separation.
Now, the Styrofoam serves as a memorial of sorts and a reminder that kids can make a difference. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The students say they discover that 1 in 6 people in the country often go hungry, and if we wasted just 15 percent less food, we could feed another 25 million people. How to prevent our top graduates from leaving the region and taking their talents with them? Pledging not to text and drive? And lapel cameras on officers' uniforms? These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently hosted leaders of nine LA-area colleges and universities to discuss how better to retain graduates and also how to improve our economy. The universities represented were UCLA, USC, Loyola Marymount, Los Angeles Community College, Occidental College, Caltech, and the Cal State campuses of Los Angeles, Northridge, and Dominguez Hills.
Our economy cannot prosper if we don't have universities and institutions of higher learning that are keeping their students here when they graduate, that are keeping ideas here and helping them start companies that are in this geographical area.
The mayor's office is also working with the universities to promote STEAM programs in LA's middle and high schools. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. Five years ago, on September 12th, 25 train passengers were killed in a collision in Chatsworth after it was believed that the train conductor was texting while operating the train. Councilmembers Mitchell Englander and Mike Bonin have joined AT&amp;T in launching the "It Can Wait" campaign, encouraging members of the public not to text and drive.
And much like drunk driving, texting takes an average of 4.6, 4.6 seconds on average off the road, your eyes off the road.
I'm not saying don't text or don't read your emails while you're on your way to work, just go metro.
Each year, over 1.5 million accidents involve a distracted driver, yet studies show that 50 percent of people behind the wheel are still texting. Councilmember Mitchell Englander, who is chair of the Public Safety Committee, is asking the council to direct the Los Angeles Police Department in field-testing lapel cameras to be worn on police uniforms. While in-car cameras continue to be used by the LAPD, not all officers patrol in a vehicle. That's why Englander is asking for members of various LAPD units, such as SWAT and K-9 units, to field-test body cameras, which Englander says could ensure officer safety and resolve potentially controversial encounters. Councilmember Gil Sadio has introduced a motion in City Council for a report that will look into the installation of street signage or other appropriate markers, as well as possible sites for emergency call boxes along the LA River. This was in response to community concerns regarding the safety of the path that is used for biking, walking, and jogging. A member of the Alliance of River Communities first raised the issue of safety along the river during the council's Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee meeting. Over two dozen young cancer survivors were recently treated to an afternoon they won't soon forget. As Anita Bennett reports, they got to rub shoulders with Hollywood stars and become honorary LAPD officers. The Sunshine Kids got a hero's welcome from the LAPD and the police department band.
It's just crazy. It's just a good experience.
Nick Serrano and 26 other young people struggling with cancer became honorary police officers for a day during a special ceremony at the Universal City Sheraton.
And now I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The teens, some from as far away as Connecticut and Florida, then climbed into police cruisers and took a ride across town. And the Sunshine Kids were brought here to Raleigh Studios in Hollywood, where they were given their red carpet treatment, and they got to mingle with some stars.
It's exciting, because not much people get to see famous people from where I'm at.
Among the famous faces, veteran actor GW Bailey from the TV series Major Crimes, and Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck.
These are some very heroic young men and women that are going through a very tough time, and it's important for us to recognize that and to try to get them, you know, a little, little interest and a little acknowledgement in their day.
We give them memories. They'll leave here with all kinds of fantastic memories of people they met, places they saw.
The students say their week-long visit to LA is something they'll never forget.
It's changed me in a little way. It's told me like that there are still good people in the world that want to help you and don't judge you for your flaws and just go with you.
Hopefully, next year, I can have the chance to volunteer, help, and actually return the favor that they gave to me.
Overall, it was an experience that brought a little sunshine to these kids' lives. In Hollywood, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The Sunshine Kids Foundation and private donors paid for the students' visit to LA. In this week's list of things to do, a drum festival followed by a jazz festival and also retail therapy. The City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs and Friends of Watts Towers Art Center present the 32nd Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival on Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In celebration of the Watts Towers Art Center's first 52 years, the festival's lineup will take the audience into a musical journey around the world with the synthesis of pre-Columbian and contemporary music and dance in the ancient Mexican tradition. The program also includes a Southern Italian percussionist, as well as Japanese taiko music. It takes place at the Watts Towers Art Center campus, which is located at 1727 East 107th Street. And the very next day, on Sunday, September 29th, also at the Watts Towers Art Center campus, will be the 37th Annual Simon Rodeo Watts Towers Jazz Festival from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Sunday's celebration will feature traditional jazz, performances with a fusion of jazz and Afro-Cuban flavors, as well as a classic and spoken-word teen truth. The festival's activities and programs also include the arts exhibition Through the Eyes of Charles Dixon, guided tours of the Watts Towers, children's activities, and food for sale, along with arts and crafts. For more information on both festivals, go to wattstowers.org. Who says shopping has to be done in a mall or at the department store? The Port of Los Angeles invites you to the Keep On Truckin' Bonanza, taking place on Saturday, September 28th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The fun, family-friendly festival will feature retail trucks parked on the port's lot at the Port's Craft Marketplace, located at 110 East 22nd Street in San Pedro. The first retail truck bonanza received such a great reception that the port couldn't resist having one more before summer ends. Parking and admission are free. There will also be a raffle to win tickets to the new Cirque du Soleil traveling show Totem at the port. Go to craftedportla.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that traveling Cirque du Soleil show at the port, well, Yana Kay gives us a sneak peek of this highly anticipated attraction that hopes to bring even more locals and tourists to our city's harbor district. Cirque du Soleil dancer Eric Hernandez is performing a traditional Native American hoop dance. It's part of the new Cirque du Soleil show coming to San Pedro in October.
The dance tells a story. It tells the story of the different plants and animals that the Native Americans saw. And it also ties in with the evolution theme of the show.
The new Cirque du Soleil show is called Totem, and it's coming to the Port of Los Angeles for the first time as part of a traveling show. Cirque officials say they hope to have a positive impact on the community by boosting businesses and tourism, and they're counting on Totem's depiction of the incredible journey of mankind to draw big crowds.
When you walk into that big top, and it's sort of a transition into this fantasy world, and you sit down, and then you smell the popcorn and that sort of thing, it really, you know, puts you in a different place. And for the next, you know, two hours, you get to forget everything else and just be awe-inspired.
Totem will be at the port for a one-month run, and local officials couldn't be more proud that San Pedro will be taking center stage.
I love this community and just that we can actually open up to the rest of Los Angeles and welcome them in and have something that is identifiable for them, which is Cirque. So it's a known entity, they know what it is, and that's a reason for them to come down here and revisit the community.
Now, local restaurants here in downtown San Pedro will be offering discounts for folks with show tickets. Totem's opening night is October 11th. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. Totem premiered in 2010 and features more than 50 dancers and acrobats. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hi, this is Caritello Family.
We are from Inzal Sergio's Royal Heights.
You are watching Channel 35, our city, our channel.
... Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks for being here on time.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Mr. Clerk, I believe that we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Philbon, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Caress, Coria, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in accord, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Sadio moves, Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Bloomfield moves, Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request from a member to refer Item 2 back to the Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee. That's Item 2.
Without objection, that'll be the order?
And, Mr. President, I've also been informed that there is a request from a member to refer Item 4 back to the Personnel Committee.
Without objection. Continue.
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. However, it should be held on the desk until such time as the Public Safety Committee report is submitted and circulated.
Okay, so be it. Next.
Items 3 through 6 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us.
Very good, sir. For Items 3 through 6, we do have cards on all items.
Okay, so then we will hold those cards. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to Item Number 7. It was on the continuation agenda, and it's an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, that item is before us? Do we have cards on that item?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, well, let's take that up. There are no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote. Open the roll. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Mr. Buscaino.
The poor commissioner, Item Number 8, sir? Or, Item 7, I'm sorry. If I can call that, like, the commissioner, Ms. Castellanos is here with her family.
Which item was that?
7, please. So you can hold that?
So we have? No, no problem.
Thank you, sir.
So now, let's get back to the item we're gonna vote on. Let's open the... Nope. That's it? So we're gonna hold it? All right, so that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations.
Okay, now, we have a couple of brief presentations, and that will be led by Mr. Tom LaBange. And Mr. O'Farrell, I think you have one as well.
Mr. President, I want to have you say hello to Dino Perez and Joe Matias right here from Runner Circle. We had a Los Angeles River Run, Mitch, you remember what it was? Out of that River Run, a lot of people ran on the LA River. It's our third annual.
Guys, get over there by Mr. LaBange. He does not bite.
That's right.
It may seem like it sometimes, but he doesn't.
But we raised some money for the community. $750 for the community. $7,000. I said $700,000 there, Cynthia, because $7,050. The Los Angeles Parks Foundation, Mr. Sadio, Friends of the Los Angeles River, the River Corp., Sister Cities, and also All Things Good. So thank you. Let's give him a big hand. Thank you right here. What's your address? What's your address on Las Feliz?
3216. 3216.
Runner Circle's located at 3216 Las Feliz Boulevard in Atwater Village. They got great shoes. They make you run fast.
Which council district is that in?
Council District 13.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, did you want to introduce a distinguished group of visitors?
Just, just real briefly, Mr. Chair and colleagues, thank you. In advance of the very special presentation on Deaf Awareness Month, we have a wonderful delegation visiting us this morning, and I want to thank my friend Scott Sofor for this. Please join me in welcoming board members of the newly-formed National Social Economic Welfare Foundation. The purpose of this organization is to advocate for social economic justice and to build awareness of the economic welfare issues here in the United States, as well as in Korea. They are to be commended for their commitment to helping communities of need, especially here in the city of Los Angeles. In addition, colleagues, we are joined by an esteemed delegation who is here today also representing the efforts of the NSEWF in South Korea. We are proud of the contributions and achievements of our Korean-American community here in Los Angeles, and we look forward to great things from the foundation going forward. Allow me to introduce very briefly Dr. Wayne Gaddis, who will be greeting this body on behalf of the group, and I welcome all of you. Thank you. Doctor?
Good to see you again, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and to the City Council. We're truly grateful to be here. This organization is an organization that is a group that is going to be reaching all communities. This group is going to be there to help with scholarship, not only that, to be able to help educate and vote tech, and not only that, but to bring the communities together throughout the city of Los Angeles. And once again, we want to thank you, councilmen, for welcoming us today, and we are truly thankful for our friends from Korea that has been here. And thank you so much, Mitch, for having us on today. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Give them a round of applause. They deserve it. Mr. O'Farrell, I do just want to say while you're there, I have a great relationship with Dr. Gaddis, but you have Reverend Bob Gay, who is my... We worked together, and my former neighbor for a bunch of years, and a very good man. So if we could give Bob Gay a round of applause. Bob, wave your hand so everybody knows who you are.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I bet Scott. Take care.
Okay, before we start on our last presentation, let's take up the commissioner, I think, Mr. Buscaino, so that your commissioner will not wait, doesn't have to wait. I do think we have one card. And that card... So do you want me to call the card first, or?
We'll take, we'll take Ms. Castellanos first.
Okay, then, please, go ahead, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. Colleagues, before you, you have a commission appointment from Mayor Garcetti on Patricia Castellanos, who has the skills and knowledge, the ability to move our port forward on making it competitive and ensuring that we move forward on our waterfront redevelopment. Patricia, welcome. We are so proud of you. You're joined by your parents, your sister, and your nephew Lincoln, who's here. And just tell us a little about yourself and what you plan on bringing to the table as you move forward in addressing...
as you move forward in addressing Port of Los Angeles-related issues.
Thank you, councilmember. My councilmember, I'm proud and happy that you introduced me. Good morning, Council President Wesson and councilmembers. I'm honored to be here and honored at the prospect of serving this city as Harbor Commissioner and grateful for your consideration of me to that appointment. I have, by training, been a community organizer now for close to 20 years. I believe that some of the traits and skills that community organizers possess, listening, being at the top of that, and bringing people together, are some that are valuable for positions such as Harbor Commissioner. I think the ability to bring different sides together, particularly in the harbor, where we have such a valuable asset to our regional economy, that, you know, we want to continue to build and strengthen, make sure that we remain competitive, while at the same time make sure that we're an asset not just to our economy and our businesses, but also to our local residents and residents throughout the city.
As we all know, colleagues, the Port of Los Angeles is the number-one trade gateway in the country. It ought to be and ought to continue to be the number-one trade gateway in the country. In light of the competition that we see across the world, even to our neighbors to the east of us, the Port of Long Beach, we need to ensure that we are ready to move forward. The port, they budget a million dollars a day on infrastructure improvements. It hits home for me and to you, being a resident of San Pedro, that the jobs are critical to remain in the Port of Los Angeles and ensuring containers come in and out of our port. Tell me a little about the importance of ensuring that the port grows, but also grows green, in light of making sure that our environment is safe and that we can move forward on environmental issues as well.
It's incredibly important, and I think L.A. has set the pace for the rest of the country with that respect of both growing and growing green. I think we do need to remain competitive. We have competition from the north and south of our borders, as well as within our borders on the East Coast now in a way that we will not... have not experienced in the past. I think building up the infrastructure is important. I think doing it in a way that continues to make environmental improvements for our communities, as well as provide good, quality, living wage jobs, is highly important, and we need to continue to do that and focus on that as a port.
It's great to see Mayor Garcetti move forward on his commitment to the community of naming, identifying, and naming three harbor-area residents on the Harbor Commissioner, on the Harbor Commission. And it's... You are a resident of the Harbor Commission, a resident of San Pedro, and what we've seen, we've been thirsting for waterfront redeveloping for decades. The port recently named a developer, the Elliott Waterfront Alliance. We look at the redevelopment efforts in Hollywood and downtown Los Angeles. We also look at ports across the country, destination ports across the country, San Francisco, Seattle, Baltimore, San Diego, why not us? The port thankfully moved forward with the leadership of Mayor, then Mayor, Villarigosa, naming a developer. I just want to hear your commitment and ensuring that the port remains committed on the infrastructure, of making sure of we move forward on working with the developer. And I want to hear that commitment from you in front of my colleagues, in front of the whole city. Give me your thoughts on it.
You do have my commitment on that. As a resident of San Pedro, I am very committed to making sure that our port, our waterfront on both sides, Wilmington and San Pedro, are a destination not just for others across the world and the country, but even here in L.A. I would love to see more of my colleagues head down to the port to enjoy what we have to offer there.
It's our turn. It's great to be joined by Dr. Nats, Cynthia Ruiz, from the Port family. Colleagues, I ask for your eye vote in moving forward. This is an incredible selection. I'm so proud of Patty and the mayor for moving forward on this appointment. Thank you, and I ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Patty, I actually don't have any questions for you. I just rose because I just wanted to say how excited I am that you're gonna be serving on this commission. I've known you for a few years now, and we've had the opportunity to work together, and I think you are absolutely phenomenal, are gonna be a great addition to this commission. I think our last mayor had an exceptional Harbor Commission, and I think with you and Dave Arien on this commission, I think that's a very strong indication that this mayor is gonna have an exceptional Harbor Commission. I've often said about LAX that I hope that our airport can be a world-class airport that is a first-class neighbor, and part of my inspiration and role model for that kind of dynamic with the proprietary department is the way the nature of the relationship between the port and the surrounding communities has changed over the past 10 years, and I think that trend is gonna continue with you on the commission, and I just think I'm stoked that you're gonna be there, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Labange on the queue.
As a committee chair, we had a chance to meet Ms. Castellanos, and it's nice to have you here and your background and to add, to contribute that. And I liked what you said, you wanted to have people come down the San Pedro Freeway all the way to the harbor to enjoy and celebrate what is there. As a child coming from a big family, this was what experience we always did, and we would not... No containers back then, they were just cargo and the ferry and all that. But now, there's a transformation, and many mayors have done things, including Mayor Bradley with Pier 400, and all the way, Mayor Hahn, Mayor Villarigosa, and now Mayor Garcetti's opportunity to form that. Three things made the city of Los Angeles. One, water and power. Two, the Port of Los Angeles. Three, the airport, as Mr. Bonin just spoke of. And all of them have great responsibilities. So your background, your knowledge, lived in the area, and the history really will help. So this is a strong recommendation from Mr. Buscagno and Mr. Bonin. I myself, we all are on the same committee, and we look forward to your work and inviting everybody down the San Pedro Freeway to wonderful San Pedro and all points around.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll for confirmation.
Mr. President, pardon me, we do have a card on this matter.
We do have two cards on this matter, actually. Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. We'll give 'em a minute each.
I'm telling you, this gets worse and worse. Environmental... Thank you, congratulations on your appointment. So maybe you might have heard about the rail yard that has been proposed by the... pushed through by the City Council. I think Councilman Buscagno mentioned it'll take a million truck trips off the 710 freeway. But it won't really take a million truck trips off the 710 freeway. It'll take a million truck trips out of... coming towards downtown L.A. It'll put those million truck trips in Wilmington. So how do you feel about those environmental issues? And you mentioned the harbor and the greeting of the harbor, and the ships that now come into the harbor plug in for electricity. Who pays for that electricity? Does the city give the ship owners a free ride? How does that work out? And you also mentioned you're a resident of San Pedro. I understand there's some tank farms with gas in San Pedro. How's that working out, too?
Great, thank you very much. Morning, John. How are you this morning, John?
I'm good. As a 70-year-old, me...
Fantastic.
Been in the hospital for 50 years. Okay. You done a good jo... I think you... I think she's just... You're very goo... I like you. Okay, all of a sudden, I like her, okay? I went to one...
If you stopped right there, it would be perfect.
I went to... No, no. I went to one Port Commission meeting a few years ago. It was great. I enjoyed it. What I don't like is you're being forced by the mayor of this city to sign a letter of resignation before you even get the job. Now, this is the new mayor, and he lets us do this. And I'm sorry, every... When they widen... They're almost finished. Finished widening the Panama Canal. Once they widen the Panama Canal, it's over for L.A. Go to HollywoodHighlands.org for all the information, and I'll give you a gift of the last 10 seconds. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, that concludes public comment. And with that, we'll open the roll for your confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations. I don't think you have any friends, family, or fans here with you. Clearly, you've filled council chambers, so... All right, we're gonna go ahead and start our presentations for this morning. Mr. Wesson is ready for death awareness. We've got the council president making his way to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Where's Sean and Mercedes? Mercedes, come on up here. And there, Sean. I'll let things die down a little bit, but members, I want to... It's a pleasure to declare the month of September Death Awareness Month. It's a very special celebration for this council. It has been led so long by former Councilman Tony Cardenas and now Congressman Tony Cardenas. And this year, Mr. Weezer and I are gonna do our very best to make this a successful program, but it's hard to follow Mr. Cardenas's lead. So for all of us that are here, let us give a, I guess, a welcome of sorts to Mr. Cardenas so that he can hear us back in Washington, D.C. So let's let him... Let him feel us, Mr. Cardenas, because this was a very special day to Tony, and I'm sure that he could feel us. This program has been going on for 15 years. It was started by a young lady named Bertha Valesquez, whose daughter was deaf, and the mother was frustrated that there weren't enough programs to help her daughter move into the mainstream. So she felt that it was important that we had a month and a special day, which will be tomorrow, where we could celebrate all of the contributions from the individuals from the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Could we please give Bertha, who started this, a round of applause? I have some notes, but I'm gonna move away from the notes and speak from a personal experience that I had. I was... I think Mr. Sadio and Mr. Parks were Pop Warner football coaches, maybe both in the same conference. I was a football coach in the King Conference as well. As I was coaching Pop Warner football, my wife worked for a school called Echo Horizon. Echo Horizon had a program to mainstream deaf children into society. It was a very exciting and successful school. While she was doing that, I met this young man who was deaf, that was just a bottle of energy. He would knock people down, he'd run through the halls, he just was energized all the time. He wanted to play Pop Warner football, but nobody would spend the time or take the time to coach him because he was deaf and he couldn't hear what was going in... going on. So I volunteered to coach this young man named Jouston, who became an all-star on my team playing defensive end and kickoff returns. And you could see how this just literally changed his life and made it... and made him proud of who he is and was by him doing something that no one thought that he could do. That's what this month is all about. It's about... We pride ourselves on being a very diverse city, and the deaf and hard-of-hearing community is one of the entities that makes us great, and they deserve to have this month. They deserve to sing their praises, and we, who are not deaf, should stand with them and celebrate and do what we can to make their lives easier. So, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Weezer, and I cannot follow you, but we will do the best we can. So again, give me a round of applause as we declare September Death Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Now, before we get to the other members, I have a very important job, two jobs, real quickly. I want to introduce the emcee for tomorrow's events. Sean Bur... Bertie, give Sean a round of applause. Now, Sean, the young man, who's an actor, which is really not an easy thing to do when you are deaf, but he told me earlier today that he gave performances to his mom and dad when they were in bed, and he would disturb them and give his shows. So that's where he got started. I also found out that this young man is a close horse like myself, so he and I really hit it off, and we will probably go shopping together. Sean, you buy, I'll drive, okay? But anyway, what he did, he was determined to act. So I just want to read off a few of his accomplishments. He broke into the industry in making the movie Sandlot 2. From there, he went on, and he filmed a film called The Bondage, The Death Family, The Legend of the Mountain Man, and he's done many commercials. And while in high school, he was named Mr. Teen Death America. He currently stars on the ABC hit family show Switched at Birth, where he's one of the lead deaf actors, along with Marlee Maitland, who we've all seen on many shows. The last that I can really remember where I loved her was The West Wing. So the two of them are major stars on that program. This young man loves the fact that he speaks... that he's bilingual. He speaks sign, and he speaks English. He's always been there to set an example for those who want to become an actor, or those who just want to be proud of who they are. If you could please give a round of applause to my actor, the... I think they called the Deaf James Dean? Is that what they call... Let's give Sean a round of applause. So again, Sean, thank you for being with us today. Thank you for being the emcee for tomorrow. Your presence makes this program just slightly better, and we thank you very much for this. Our next honoree, Mercedes?
Yes.
Has a very interesting life story. If I remember correctly, you came here from Guadalajara and arrived in the Boyle Heights area on your 15th birthday. She was faced with many challenges. At one point, an abusive ex-husband who would do anything to try to get her deported. But the one gift that these two people were able to create was a young son named Michael. And Mercedes was determined that her son have every opportunity that any one of our sons or daughters would have. But it was no walk in the park for Mercedes. At one point, she was homeless. At one point, she was homeless and did several odd jobs just to get along. But imagine this member's homeless, attending UCLA, where she achieved her degree and moved forward and got a master's degree at Cal State LA. And she's now a social worker specializing working with deaf individuals. I think she sets an example that regardless of the hand that you're dealt, that you can turn it around and become very successful. Everybody, please give Mercedes a round of applause.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, give yourself a round of applause. You deserve it. How old is Michael these days?
He's wonderful. He's going to college.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's right there.
Michael, stand up. Let us see you. Where's Michael? Son of Mercedes. Give Michael a round of applause. We're very proud of both of you. With that said, Mr. President, I'm going to present a resolution, and then it would be very appropriate to have the members identify who their guests are today. So what I have right here...Sean, this one is a special recognition for you, Sean. So I hope I don't get beat up because I didn't get one for everybody else. No, the other council members have it. But I want to present this to Sean, not only for an outstanding and successful acting career, but for being a role model to all of the deaf and hearing impaired people in the United States of America. Our Death Festival is the biggest in the United States of America, bigger than Texas. All right, Texas? So anyway, let's give Sean another round of applause as I present to him a recognition signed by every member of this Los Angeles City Council. Sean, congratulations. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. With that, we've got...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yes, but wait, there's more.
I got one more. This is for Mercedes. I want you to do me a favor and help me pronounce your last name.
Flores Islas.
Say it one more time.
Flores Islas.
And that's what I was going to say. So I was going to hit it spot on. But this is a recognition from my partner in this, who has family matters to attend to today, Mr. Jose Weezer. And we thank you for the example that you have set, and we're giving congratulations to Michael in advance because I know he's going to be a very successful young man, thanks to you. Mercedes, give it up. With that said, Mr. President, if no one else has any other surprise plaques or resolutions, I turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. And members, I know each of you have some folks, some special folks you want to recognize. So we're going to just go around the horseshoe. We'll start with Mr. Blumenfeld.
Mr. President, I'm going to have the emcee for tomorrow say a few words. And I should...well, no, I'll just let you say...
Testing, testing. Can you hear me? I'm sorry about that. Unfortunately, I can't use this microphone. You know, I'm purely deaf, and it's really a great thing for me, quite frankly. First of all, it's a great honor to get this award, and a special thank you to the city of LA for this and to the President Weezer and Wesson. I will continue to do my part as a citizen here of LA for the city, for its growth and from here on out. And I will do my part, and thank you so much. I really appreciate this award. God bless you.
And if we could give a round of applause for Richard and Michael right over here for all of their work. Richard and Michael, thank you. Mr. President?
Great, thank you very much. We'll start off with Mr. Blumenfeld.
Great, thank you. It is a pleasure to be part of this ceremony today. It is an inspiring ceremony and one that's well-deserved by all of the honorees. I'm pleased I stand before you today to honor Jorge Valdivia. He is Council District 3's Deaf Awareness Month Honoree. Now, Jorge over here was born with two challenges, two major challenges: severe hearing loss in both ears, and he was born developmentally disabled. Jorge is able to communicate his needs in both English and Spanish using limited language and basic American Sign Language. Jorge is a client of the therapeutic living centers for the blind, which is in Reseda in my district. Now, the center itself was founded in 1975 and is a community of learners and teachers who have come together to create a supportive and encouraging environment for children and adults with developmental disabilities, blindness, and hearing loss. Jorge is making giving back to his community a focus, and he dedicates his time to working with seniors at the Nutrition Center at the Los Angeles Jewish Home for the Aging. And in his free time, Jorge lovingly cares for his iguanas, his turtles, his frog, and fish. And he has two pugs, one named Max and one named Beauty. His accomplishments, generous spirit, and perseverance in meeting the challenges that he faces are truly inspiring. I wish him the best, being selected as my district's Deaf Awareness Month Honoree. He continues to make the city of Los Angeles a better place to live, work, and play. I am grateful that he's come today to receive this honor. And Jorge, I'd like to give you this special certificate. Let's give a round of applause for Jorge Valdivia.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Labonge has an early excusal and has to run out, so I'm going to allow him out of order if we could to go next, please.
I'm going right here because this is Angela Kaufman. She's doing her work right now. She's with our Office of Disability, and she's our honoree today. Angela's going to keep doing the work because she's helping those who are impaired, hearing right now. But she is so special because we all know her because every year she's been here for us. Every time there's a special meeting in our district, we need help. Angela's the one. A longtime ADA compliance coordinator for LA City Department of Disability, she manages grants programs, provides educational training, and technical assistance. Locally and nationally, she's involved with emergency preparedness management, people with disabilities, as well as those who have other challenges and needs. She's a hero in the City of Angels. So we want to salute her. She's a graduate. A matador. Where's a matador from, Joe? Cal State Northridge. Okay, we got it. I didn't ask Mitch. He would have got it. But she's northridge, great bachelor of Deaf Studies, and a master's in Special Education. She's a friend, and I love her, and keep working there. Hold on a second. On behalf...turn around for a second there, so right there, so they could see you right here. On behalf of the people of Los Angeles, we salute you, Angela, on this day, and this nice loaf of bread made by the nuns because it's from the Monastery of the Angels. Every day, Angela is an angel in the City of Angels. Good job. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now, we'll ask Mike Bonham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do need to object, first of all, though, for taking Mr. Labonge out of order. He presented flowers to his honoree, so it really makes the rest of us look like slouches for not stepping up.
Yes, well, you're a slouch.
So hopefully, your staff can go over to the flower mart and cover for the rest of us. Thank you.
Absolutely, of course, of course.
Council members, it's my pleasure today to introduce my district's honoree for Deaf Awareness Month, Doctor of Education Michelle Christie, who's the founder and CEO of No Limits for Deaf Children. No Limits for Deaf Children is actually in Culver City, but she's from Pacific Palisades, so she's actually okay. Oftentimes, in life or in work, it takes someone who thinks outside the box or who does something different to get amazing results. And Michelle and the work she has done at No Limits is an example of that. In 1996, Dr. Christie recognized that there was a lack of opportunities for children with hearing loss to improve their speaking abilities in fun and non-academic settings. So she founded No Limits, which is a nonprofit organization that provides those opportunities for deaf children. She designed an after-school theater program to help develop communication skills, expand vocabulary and grammar, and to help understand character development. And through role-playing and through creativity and developing public speaking skills, No Limits children began to confidently move into the hearing world. They saw dramatic improvements that children were receiving, countless testimonials from their families, peers, and educators. And so they expanded No Limits to become a national program. To date, No Limits has produced more than 75 original shows in 13 states, performing for more than 100,000 audience members who've witnessed the accomplishments and talents of these inspiring children. They have expanded the program beyond the theatrical arts to provide auditory speech and language training year-round. And they, in 2002, they opened the No Limits Educational Center, which provides essential services to underserved, low-income, school-aged deaf children who live in greater Los Angeles. It's a fantastic program. She does fantastic work, and I'm so glad to have her here today. I also want to acknowledge her father Nugent, who is here with her today. We have two certificates for you. This one I'm presenting today. This one is for you personally, and then we have another bigger one, which will be for your office.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Sedia...oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Buscagno, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gives me great privilege to bring up Dr. Deborah Tool of CD-15's honoree. Dr. Deborah Tool has a 38-year tenure with the Los Angeles Community College District, serving in numerous roles, which include counselor, instructor, 25 years as the director of the Los Angeles Harbor College Disabled Student Programs and Services, director of Trio Programs, which is a student support service program from the federal government, and developer of numerous college mental health service programs. She places the top priority on advocacy work for all disabled students, with a special focus on students with mental health challenges and students from the deaf community. Her advocacy work on behalf of the students from the deaf community includes serving as a district-wide leader, working to transform the interpreter hiring process for improved access to and utilization of interpreters in the classroom. The changes made are more user-friendly, efficient, and ADA compliant. She's also developed over 20 years of specialized federal grant funding, which provides supplemental support, increased retention, graduation, and transfer rates for the student population and others. Dr. Tool has a long grant development history in which she successfully secured multimillion dollars in funds to develop and maintain many ongoing student service programs. She secured U.S. Department of Education Trio funds for over 25 years to provide greater opportunities for students with disabilities in support of academic success, cultural enrichment, and empowerment to successfully complete their post-secondary education. When she developed her first Trio project, it was one of the first projects in the country which exclusively serves students with disabilities. She also collaborated with the Sheriff's Department, the Community College District Disabled Student Program directors, and the city of Los Angeles to host a specialized training for law enforcement at LA Harbor College on how to best protect and serve individuals from the deaf community. Another noteworthy college student mental health program developed effort by Dr. Tool is the creation of the Life Skills Center at LA Harbor College. She developed this cost-effective, humanistic, mental health program in 2001 because the demand of student mental health services far exceeded the college's ability to meet the needs. Students are now offered mental health services, workshops, psychoeducational groups, which meet this critical student need. The Life Skills Center has the distinction of being recognized by the California Community College Chancellor's Office as a best practice and is now being replicated at other campuses in the district and the state. She's received numerous awards on the Mental Health and Student Success Program awards, which include LA County Mental Health Commission's Most Innovative Program of the Year Award, California Community College Chancellor's Office Student Success Award, and the Robert G. Porter Scholar Award. As you can tell, colleagues, well distinguished, Dr. Tool, we love you for what you've done for the deaf community. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to present to you this resolution for your commitment to the deaf community and commend you today as we celebrate the Death Awareness Month. Thank you. God bless you. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, let's get a better round of applause out there. Thank you. Mr. Sedia, if you're ready. Soon as we're done with the photos there. Thank you.
It's a very nice-framed resolution there that Mr. Buscagno is embarrassing all of us with. We appreciate that very much. Let me talk about Jeanette Duran, an immigrant coming with her family to realize the American dream. Her first language was Spanish. She came along with her parents and her eight brothers and sisters. She is trilingual, loves this country, and received her citizenship. She came at the age six, received her citizenship when she was 18. Her first language is Spanish. She then became fluent in English and American Sign Language, making her a trilingual individual. And we are very fortunate and blessed that she has put those skills to the use of the community. She is a consummate public servant. She is a counselor at the Marlton School of the Deaf. It's located here in Los Angeles. It's part of our LAUSD district. It services the entire city and services many from the first district of Los Angeles. She is involved in a program and works with Mercedes, who we heard of her illustrious background. She works with Mercedes in a variety of programs, and one in particular is that she works with a program called Hands on Signs Foundation, which is a program for mentorship that just simply didn't exist in the past. And so this is a new development in the deaf community. She's the first of her family to go to college. She attended CSUN. Where are the matadors from, Mr. Labonge? So she attended CSUN, and then she also attended, in Washington, D.C., the Gallaudet University, has a degree in counseling and a degree in child development. She is here as the star of her family, one who has taken her conditions and circumstances and put them to the service of the community. I ask all of you to join us in honoring and applauding Jeanette Duran. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're just keeping track here and keeping score. All right. Mr. Fuentes. Ms. Martinez.
Aren't you skipping Mr.?
Oh, no. You're next. We're good. Thank you.
Or do we? And flowers.
And? Framed certificate and flowers, Mr. Bonner. Did you hear that? Wanted to make sure.
This comes as a surprise to my honoree, but colleagues, I have the distinct pleasure today of honoring Bertha Velasquez. Where is she? Oh, here you are. Wanted to surprise you, Bertha. Bertha has been one of the biggest advocates for the deaf and hard-of-hearing communities in Los Angeles that we have ever seen. I've known Bertha for almost 10 years, ever since she spent her time with my predecessor, now Congressmember Tony Cardenas. Bertha has shown an amazing drive in her will to pull off the Deaf Festival every year here in the city of Los Angeles, bringing with her, when she started organizing the Deaf Festival with then-Councilmember Pacheco's office, and now it's celebrating its 15th anniversary. The Deaf Fest has turned into one of the biggest international events of the year. Bertha works hard to connect the hearing and the non-hearing world through her fashion shows, resource booths, and many programs at Deaf Fest. It's through Deaf Fest that we have all come together to learn more about each other. Deaf Fest is this Saturday from 12 to 4 here at City Hall, and if you've never been to this event, I strongly recommend that you come and check it out and see what Bertha and all her wonderful partners have been able to accomplish. I am so proud today to honor Bertha Velasquez for her tireless effort on behalf of the deaf community. Congratulations, Bertha. We love you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
A certificate for all your great work and everything you do on behalf of the deaf community. Thank you very much, Bertha.
And flowers.
And a mask. The ribbon, too.
All right. And a round of applause. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Farrell, when you're ready, after they could step aside, take photos. We'll go ahead and take you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, colleagues, my honoree today is Elvia Cuevas. And Elvia is sick today. She's not able to be here. But I have standing in for her. I have Nell Truesdale. Ms. Truesdale, if you could please step up.
Step back.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure. I'll step back.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Will this work?
Here.
Am I good?
Here.
Okay. And before I start this, I want to recognize someone in the chamber today, and that is our honoree from two years ago, Cindy Duham. A Council District 13 resident, Cindy. Wave. Thank you. Cindy is a tireless advocate for the hearing impaired and a great community activist. In relation to my honoree today, Elvia, she has been with the Los Angeles Unified School District for over 15 years, first as a sign language interpreter for deaf adults and presently as an instructional aide to high school students at Marlton School for the Deaf. She also volunteers to teach deaf foreign students basic English, history, government, and civics, which are all required to be eligible for naturalization. She has interpreted for and witnessed hundreds of deaf applicants achieve their dream of United States citizenship during their naturalization ceremonies. In '08, Ms. Cuevas earned two teaching credentials in American Sign Language, ASL, from the University of San Diego, and a diploma in Spanish proficiency from the Universidad Nacional Autónoma de México, UNAM. In September of '09, Ms. Cuevas was awarded the title of Teacher of the Year at the Abraham Friedman Occupational Center. Ms. Cuevas has been an active U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services and Naturalization Advisory Committee member since 2008, and has been presented with numerous certificates of appreciation from the agency for her great work. She is currently in the final steps to set up a nonprofit organization called Citizenship in ASL for the Deaf. She has two beautiful daughters, Marilyn Alvarez, Natalie Alvarez, and a granddaughter, Valerie Chim. I would like to acknowledge Elvia Cuevas for her contributions to the betterment of the deaf and hearing impaired community in the city of Los Angeles, and especially to the students of my district, the Great 13th. On behalf of Elvia Cuevas, Nell Truesdale, please accept these flowers and certificate of appreciation for all of her wonderful work.
Now, let's give another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Parks.
My pleasure. Thank you very much. We'd like to ask our guest, Mike Truesdale, to come up. He's a member of the staff at Marlton Elementary School. It's in the 8th District, one of the few deaf and hearing impaired schools in L.A. Unified School District. He's been there for 19 years, teaching students in the subjects of literature and English. Prior to being at Marlton, he spent 15 years at UPS. He's very passionate about his work. It's evident by the day-to-day work ethic of his students. He encourages them to participate in all the programs and to never stop learning. He also has been an Academic Bowl coach with the Gallaudet University Program for the past seven years. His purpose and goals is to equip each deaf and hard-of-hearing student with tools to become independent, effective members of the deaf community and to society. Mike is married, has three daughters, and we're here today to honor him on behalf of the 8th District and pleased that he represents Marlton Avenue School.
All right. Another round of applause for a terrific recipient. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, neighbors. Please join me in welcoming Renee Thomas with the Greater Los Angeles Agency on Deafness. She's been at the agency for nearly 15 years now. She started with GLAD as a community advocate and was tasked with ensuring equal access for deaf and hard-hearing individuals to places such as medical facilities, schools, and courts. She was promoted to Advocate Specialist and began consulting on legal cases involving the deaf and hard-of-hearing. She was appointed as the ADA Compliance Coordinator for the L.A. County Juvenile Halls and Camps to ensure that they were ADA compliant and that minors were receiving reasonable accommodations. As a job placement coordinator, she provided employment services for the deaf and hard-of-hearing. Today, she is a program manager in partnership with the Employment Development Department and oversees a program at eight offices in the Greater Los Angeles area. She continues to be a tireless advocate on behalf of the deaf and hard-of-hearing, and she has been an asset to the Development Department and to residents of the 9th Districts, and I commend her for her longtime advocacy. And so join me in saying thank you. And we present her with some flowers and a framed certificate, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, there's no objections? She'd like to say?
Absolutely. Please, yes.
I just want to share with you a very short story that I experienced this morning, and I just wanted to let you guys know about that. My six-year-old son wanted breakfast this morning, wanted fast food, so I drove through the drive-thru, and I parked, and I can't hear. And he says, if you go through the drive-thru, you'd be able to hear, talk to the person in the window. And the woman said, "You can't order through the window." And I said, "Well, I know, but I'm deaf, you know. Can you help me?" And she had this facial expression on her, and I could see all the cars building up behind me as I'm trying to order. So I told her what I wanted to order, and she said, "Please park off to the side and wait for 10 minutes." So equal access is out there. Really, the point is that to make sure that every place we go is equal access, and for having the city of L.A. become deaf-friendly is really the main goal, and I appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
And thank you for sharing that story. In fact, we'd started Movies in the Park years ago in our district, where we bring out the community, and we've had thousands of people over the years to show up and watch movies in the park. The northwest San Fernando Valley, particularly my district, is home to the largest deaf community by population in the entire city of Los Angeles. A lot of that is because of CSUN and their deaf studies and what they've done to attract just an amazing group of people that volunteer and get involved as well. And recognizing that, we added closed caption to our outdoor movies and where we invite everybody to participate in outdoor movies. And we have one of the most unique and special individuals who has really made a difference for the entire deaf community and actually for all of us to be able to communicate with them telephonically over the phone, Joe Slotnick. I want to tell you about my recipient. Joe, I'm going to get you to stand up here, right next to me. Joe became deaf at the age of three after a bout with spinal meningitis. After graduating from Harvard University, he began his career in market charting, mechanical draftsmanship, and computer programming, and wait till you hear what he did with it. First as a trainee and advancing to Senior Computer Systems Analyst. After 21 years, he retired and became a consultant and educator. In 1988, Joe earned a master's degree in Educational Administration and Supervision at Cal State Northridge National Center on Deafness Leadership Training Program. He has been involved in community services for years, and he was part of the original development of the old teletypewriters for the deaf, the TTY system. In fact, Joe was the second person in the city of Los Angeles to get the TTY station in 1966. He was involved in the beginning in promoting telecommunications to bridge communications between deaf and hearing parties, as well as to enhance independence for deaf consumers and users. He was also involved with the formation of the Oral Deaf Adults Section, OTIS, of the Alexander Graham Bell Association for the Deaf, and the formation of the National Teletypewriters for the Deaf Incorporated, TDI, and served on its board for a number of years. He is also active in Temple Beth Solomon of the Deaf in the San Fernando Valley, the only deaf-run congregation for Jewish deaf in this nation that owned its own synagogue. Joe has served on its board as a member and president for years. Although the synagogue has since been sold, TBS continues to this day to be a viable organization, meeting the needs of the deaf, the Jewish community, and the people and their families in this region. Joe and his wife, Mary, who is here today. Mary is a dear friend of mine as well and is a volunteer at our Granada Hills Library, where we've come into contact many times. And Mary is joined, and Joe, by their daughter Cindy and their grandson, who is here as well. We thank you so much for supporting your granddad. You are truly blessed. You have incredible parents and grandparents who do so much for this community, truly an inspiration to all of us. And it's absolutely my honor and privilege to not only present Joe with a signed certificate that is framed, but signed by every city council member here in Los Angeles. So congratulations, and thank you to all the honorees and for all of you for bringing them here today. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's nice, Mitchell.
We're going to go, we'll take one, some with the family. With that, I'll turn it over to Council President Herb Wesson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks, Herb. Thank you. Let me clean up after myself here.
Let's give another round of applause.
Hey, Sammy?
Thank you all so very much. Hopefully, we'll see many of you tomorrow.
Can you grab? Hold a second. Thank you. Thank you.
What would be the next item that we'd deal with here?
That would be Item 1, held special.
Called special by Mr. John Walsh. John, please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. This again is an appointment by Mr. Steve Robinson, this is Minute 2, to the Police Permit Review Board panel. This is the most important review board of all, okay? And I say that to everybody out here. They won't put my picture up here, they close down the top, remember. They don't want you to see me, and they put the sound down.
He is not talking about the item.
Talking about the rules. Okay. The Police Permit Review Board decide whether those holding alcohol liquor licenses in your neighborhood are following the law, or whether they're violating the law, or whether they should be given a permit in the first place. I've gone to these meetings. They all, all the Police Permit Review Board under Antonio did was put on their Monica Lewinsky kneepads, get down, open their mouth, and take it from every liquor dealer. Remember, the number-one reason that this city leads America in hit-and-run accidents and the garbage at the city council, reporters like Zahnheiser won't admit it, the reason admit it is that we have enormous amount per square mile. We have a greater number of liquor licenses per square mile than anybody. And when you decide, and remember, every time someone is killed, that person, by hit-and-run derby, almost always drunk, they got that alcohol from someplace that got a permit from you. And every damn one of you have the blood of every hit-and-run accident on your hands, and the press does for looking the other way.
He still is not talking about this side.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, a communication from Chair and member of the Public Safety Committee has been circulated for Council's consideration.
Okay, so no speakers on the queue, so let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, I believe the next, is the next item 3?
Yes, sir. Held special for cards.
Okay. It's held special by Mr. Walsh. If you would please come forward. John Walsh on item 3.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This one isn't so bad. No one's dying because of what we're going to do now. Okay, this concerns oversized vehicles. Now, remember, they don't want my face on camera, but I speak to everybody here, everybody out there, right to the camera, the way Bugs Bunny and Bob Hope did when I was a child. They spoke right to the camera.
Stay on the subject.
And this is what I am saying, and this is what I am saying, that this allows, this authorizes an ordinance about parking of oversized vehicles. It'll only be restricted from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. Remember, they come in trucks, they come in buses, they come to your neighborhood to party. This, and incidentally, this was all set up. It's not an ordinance. Instead of an ordinance, it's a resolution. Resolutions are worthless. They're toilet paper. HollywoodHighlands.org, they don't give a damn about you out there. HollywoodHighlands.org, they don't give a damn about you out there.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have two cards on item four. That's again, Mr. John—
Four is gone.
Four is gone. Okay, and so then what do you have as next?
Item five, sir, called special for cards.
Item five, called special by John Walsh and Arnold Sacks. Please come forward, John Walsh and Arnold. One minute for Mr. Walsh, you said? Okay, come forward.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, the faceless Jew. Okay, this concerns extending the DOT's contract with Serco for the collection and counting of parking meter and paystation coin revenue. I think maybe we should have an LAPD investigation of the collection of revenue. We have broken machines, the whole parking meter, brouhaha, it's out of control. So anybody out here who thinks that the city council is doing a good job on parking meters, raise your hand. I don't see anybody here. You've done a terrible job on parking meters, and now this favored company is getting an extension, and this is the way it runs, 12 to nothing, like monkeys, just pressing the button, the pleasure button. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And actually, this is more, again, an opportunity to try to educate some people. It deals with the fiscal years, and you'll see in this item, it mentions the first part is for the first fiscal years, it's $27,000 for the fiscal year 13, 14. And then it's $9,000 for fiscal year 14, 15. So it's important because, again, like I mentioned earlier, last Wednesday, the CEO is at the Board of Supervisors, and mentioned in this fiscal year, the city is already $250 million behind in its budget. But also, what's important about this item is it is an increase for them counting coins at paystations and parking garages. And the increase between the two of them is a little over two-tenths of a cent. So to get an idea, you need five cars to make one penny, 50 cars to make 10 cents, 500 cars to make a dollar, 1.5 million cars to make $3,000, which is what this increase is about. That's per month. That's how many cars are parking in the city of L.A. So what's the status of the city of L.A. own parking garages? It's the money also that's involved in the city. You get a feel for what's being collected. This is what they're making. Look at what, consider what the city is making. Less than two-tenths of a cent per dollar is going to this company. The city is getting the rest. 1.5 million cars a month are parking in city property, and we have budget deficits. It's tough.
Okay, there are no speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Per Mr. Bonin forthwith. This brings us, Mr. Clerk, I believe, to item six.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, now, on item six, I believe you indicated that Mr. Walsh's time is already expired?
Correct, sir.
So that leaves Mr. Arnold Sacks. Arnold on item six.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And this is an item, and it refers to an apartment development, I guess, the Coronel Apartments. But what's confusing, you have the general manager of the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department, part of which agency? Is that a part of the Los Angeles Housing Department? Or is that a part of the nonprofit Los Angeles Housing Authority? It doesn't really specify. It just mentioned that the Los Angeles Housing Community Investment Department. And along those lines, again, where are they doing investment work? We've lost a redevelopment agency, and kind of like in a weird situation, if you read the downtown news every once in a while, lately, they've been talking about all the development that's going on in downtown, like 94 projects going on in downtown, I believe two weeks ago it mentioned. And that's after redevelopment agency was eliminated. So what was going on with the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department when redevelopment was alive and well? And then it mentions the Hollywood Community Housing Corporation is also involved here. So why, it's a third-party pass-through. And who exactly is really making out to the best benefit here? Is it the city? Is it low-income housing? Is it low-income senior housing? Is it mixed-use housing? None of these questions are really answered. The Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, is it a nonprofit? Is it a for-profit? That's not answered either. Again, city council marching on.
Okay, thank you. Let us, I've been informed, we have one other speaker from the public who did submit a card in time, and then I will recognize you. It's Mara Johnson. Please come forward.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mara Johnson, and I'm the Housing Director for Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, which is a nonprofit affordable housing developer. Due to the demise of the redevelopment agencies, HCHC was required to begin our environmental clearance all over again through city planning for this large-family affordable housing development. We are moving through the process, but do need an extension of the term of our acquisition and predevelopment loan for this transit-oriented, large-family affordable housing project. We ask for your support on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Ms. Martinez for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like you to help me welcome Massatran Mayor-elect Carlos Felton Gonzalez, who's in council chambers today. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles. He's here as a guest of the Land Business Association. Thank you very much.
Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome. Thank you for stopping by. Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we want to adjourn, not adjourn, but recess this meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, sir.
City Attorney almost panicked on that. Okay, so let's recess this meeting and go into the special meeting.
Very good, sir. Blumenthal, Bana, Buscayno, City, O'Glin, or Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Corian, Laban, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson. Twelve members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, we have cards on this—
Mr. President, if I may, a public hearing was satisfied in committee, and a report from the Public Safety Committee has been circulated and is now before council for its consideration.
All right, wonderful then. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, if we would close this special—
Mr. President, pardon me, sir. Before doing so, there's been a request from a member to send that matter forthwith.
Then, without objection, that'll be the order. So let's adjourn this meeting and go back to the regular meeting.
Very good, sir.
Okay, then that leaves us where with what, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that leaves general public comment for matters not on today's agenda.
Okay, so let's start out with a Mr. Don Ward, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Don Ward. I'm a bicycle rider in Los Angeles. I wanted to bring attention to the council that we have an issue with the L.A. River bike path and access to that bike path. And as of now, our access is through three corridors. That's Fletcher, Hyperion, and Los Feliz. All three of those streets are major streets, and they're very difficult to get access to this L.A. River that we're developing in the future. And right now, Hyperion Bridge is up for a seismic improvement, and I saw the plans for that the other night. And it's being redesigned to be a 55-mile-an-hour zone. They're putting in banked streets, they're putting in freeway crash barriers, and there's no accommodations for cyclists. You're taking away access from very bikeable communities like Atwater, Silver Lake, Hollywood, and Los Feliz from that river. And you guys have, you know, you guys have capitulated to the film industry and erased our bike lanes on Spring Street and sought a state exemption for that, and yet, here you are allowing this bridge to become a freeway zone. It's also going to create problems for those communities because of the additional speeding traffic that come into communities like Silver Lake. I'm just asking the council to reconsider this plan and not make this a freeway. We need more pedestrian access to the river, and we need more cycling access to the river. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, again, Arnold, followed by Mr. Sacks. Go on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Here's the reason that Wezar is not here. Everybody knows it, the press knows it. Right now, there is a special panel that's been called to decide whether he sexually harassed somebody who worked for him. His lawyer has told him not to appear this whole week here at city council. He is close to resigning, okay? And remember, he claims, and this is in Mayor Sam, this is in Rick Orlov's column, that Satan is possessing his office at Boyle Heights. He has brought in a Sergeant Lopez of LAPD, this is all on the record, to exercise his office. He has paid Sergeant Lopez $1,000 out of his office account. That's why I'm saying he's an LAPD sergeant. Anybody out there who believes that your house is haunted, you call the LAPD, because now we have a precedent, they'll come to your house, and they will decide whether it's haunted. Now, this is all on my website and on many websites throughout. And you see, they're not telling me it's not true. Now, last week, I mean, Wednesday, Rosie Greer, the great Rosie Greer, came here, and he was embarrassed and treated like crap, and told that if he ever tried praying at this lectern again, he was unwelcome. Now, it had happened, I have it on my website, HollywoodHighlands.org, and this anti-black Dion O'Connell is the man who slapped Rosie Greer in the face. But he did it for our Jewish city attorney, okay? That's what he did it for. And I'm telling you right now, HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Do you just wake up in the morning and make stuff up? All right, if we could have Mr. Arnold Sacks—oh, no, no hollering and screaming. Okay, if we could have Mr. Arnold Sacks, Lavanda Dillon, and Arturo Palacios, please come forward. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. And Councilman Wesson, I suggest you look at the movie Beetlejuice. You'll get some information about where that stuff comes from. Anyway, a couple of things about some items in today's newspaper. One was in the Los Angeles Times regarding the change to Prop 13 with Brookfield that wants to buy some property. And again, it comes back to the property tax loophole in Prop 13, where if you're not a 50% or better owner of the property, then your property does not get reassessed. Your property value will increase, but your property tax will not increase because you're not a majority owner, something that needs to be looked into. And in today's Daily Breeze, there's an article regarding the San Onofre Power Plant, and it mentions the California Public Utilities Commission, which regulates the state's privately-owned public utilities. Now, the DWP, the Department of Water Power, is not a privately-owned utility, yet they have a ratepayer advocate. And the California Public Utilities Commission, which regulates private utilities, they have a ratepayer advocate. So you wonder why there's a ratepayer advocate for private utilities and there's a ratepayer advocate for public utilities. Something doesn't make sense somewhere. And finally, Mr. President, if you don't mind it, it might take five seconds longer, I'd like to make an announcement. Tomorrow is Free Museum Day throughout the United States. 1,400 museums across the USA will waive their entry fees. You can go to a lot of museums in the city of Los Angeles. Print a ticket at SmithsonianMag.com/museumday for free admittance to a lot of museums throughout the city and county of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Arnold. Have a good weekend. Arnold, that's your time. Okay, if we could get Lavanda, Lavanda Dillon, Arturo, Arturo Palacios, Richard Robinson. Richard, Richard, come forward.
Mr. President, members, I'm an Arkansas Chickasaw, a Mississippi Choctaw, and a South Mr. Wesson, sir, amnesty has been placed on the back burner in Washington, D.C. until after the midterm elections. Mr. President, it is an issue that must not be handcuffed by bitter debate. President Obama knows the Congress is his after midterm elections, November next year. Russell means a friend of mine, the American Indian Movement. During the Carter administration on the campus of the University of Michigan, he took aim on a difficult issue as SDS helped Nelson Mandela be freed. During those years after Gerald Ford was defeated, the intellectual surge there enabled the University of Michigan to bring Russell's classrooms into the consciousness of— It's inspiring. Today, I'm introducing my AIM, American Indian Movement's Amnesty in Motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Clerk, I believe that is the last general public comment card. So where do we go from this point?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you very much. Announcements, announcements, members. Okay, with that said, if all in the council chambers could please rise, everyone, even our visitors, for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions. Mr. Price, then we'll go to Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Today, I ask we adjourn in the memory of Nathaniel Mota, who was aged 16, and he died suddenly on Friday, September 13th. He was crossing Normandy Avenue at 42nd Place at 8:20 in the evening when he was fatally struck by a hit-and-run driver while walking home from his youth group at church. Born on September 18th— Born in September 18th, 1996, in Los Angeles, to his loving parents, Lizette and Edgar Mota, he attended St. Cecilia Elementary School and was a senior at Bourbon Day High School. As part of the school's corporate work-study internship program, Nathan worked at Western Asset in Pasadena. Remembrance services and a funeral mass were held at St. Cecilia's church. The burial services followed at Holy Cross Cemetery. Upwards of 1,300 people attended. Nathan was a member of St. Cecilia's youth group, served as an altar boy there, and had a bright, limitless future. He was a tireless, hard-working young man at both his education and community services. And he compassionately cared for his family and friends. He loved watching basketball, playing with his dog Leo, and spending time with his younger brother Andrew. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him. He was a kind person that anyone would be proud to call their grandson, son, brother, nephew, or friend. In addition to his parents and brother, Nathan is survived by his maternal grandparents, Ethel and Gugiermo Valencia, his paternal grandfather, Jorge Mota, his aunts, uncles, cousins, and innumerable friends. And I request that we adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Manuel Vareto Sandoval, who passed on September 12th, 2013. He was born December 15th, 1929, to Briguido Sandoval and Esther Vareto Sandoval in Pueblo Nuevo Guanajuato, Mexico, into a family of three brothers and four sisters. Manuel moved to California in 1954, where he would meet his bride, love of his life, Catalina Ixta Fernandez, in 1956. Together, they settled in Pacoima to build their life together with their four children, Victor, Elizabeth, Esther, and Martha. Manuel was a talented musician and a singer, and found a real need to make a choice between pursuing a career in singing and creating a ministry for our community in Pacoima, and so he chose the latter. With the direction of Father Gottenboss, he helped to start the Spanish masses at Mary Macula Church in Pacoima in the early 1970s, as well as other clubs and activities that would serve the needs of our community. Throughout his life, he blessed countless people with the gift of song, from baptisms to weddings to funerals to any other sort of joyous occasion you can count on Manuel to be there to bring joy to people and soothe sadness with his voice. He is survived by his wife, his four children, and his 13 grandchildren, and 13 great-grandchildren, and two sisters, Teresa Cabrera and Socorro Ramos. I'd like to adjourn in his memory today.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Sadio.
Members, you have heard me speak frequently about the life experiences and growing up in a period that was called the Chicano Movement. We call today to lay to rest Jose Montoya, a giant in that movement, in that cultural movement. He is a poet and an artist. He is probably one of the most nationally-known poets, poet laureate of Sacramento, professor at Sacramento State, published in many journals. He lived an extraordinarily colorful life. He began in the fields of Delano, moved north, and pledged never to work the fields again. Korean War veteran, came back, went to college at San Diego State, went to college in Sacramento, received his master's degree, and he placed himself and his art and his poetry at the service of the United Farm Workers. He was an aide to Cesar Chavez, and he played central roles in organizing for the farmworkers, and played a critical role in developing an art, a poetry, that helped inspire tens of thousands of young people to join the Chicano Movement. He, with his colleagues, veterans of the Korean War, formed something that was called the Royal Chicano Air Force, the RCAF, many confused for the Royal Canadian Air Force, and it was part of their ironic humor, and it was part of their way, colorful humor, to gather attention to the cause and the movement, el movimiento. He spent his life with poetry and art, using that as a source for social change, and left a very significant legacy. If we talk about our children and family as our legacy, let me note his children. His daughter Gina, Vice President and Executive at Mexican-American Leadership Defense and Education Fund, MALDEF. They've taken cases to the U.S. Supreme Court. Jose Montoya Jr., award-winning poet and writer who founded the Poetry Unplugged at Luna's Cafe. Mr. President, you may recall Luna's across from Simons. Carlos Montoya, his son, is a bank executive and a founder in Chicago, CEO of the Astec American Bank. His son, one of my best friends, Richard Montoya, is a filmmaker, a playwright, a founder of Culture Clash. His film, Water and Power, was shortly being premiered here, coming up soon, belted upon his play, Water and Power. Vincent Montoya, his son is an incredible musician. He looks like Roy Orbison, and he's an incredible musician who has founded two bands. Thomas Montoya is a student at the Art Institute of Sacramento. Kijin Montoya is a children's arts studio manager. He's survived by his first wife, Mary Elena Montoya, and his second wife, and the ultimate Chicano experience, Juanita Ju, who brought her daughter Maya into the family. 19 grandchildren and one great-granddaughter. He was a giant of this movement. He was its cultural spokesperson, and we all are better for it. California is more intellectually and socially and culturally enriched because of his time with us. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. And he also was the father-in-law to Andrew Westhall, who works in my office. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn again in memory of our prior mayor, Tom Bradley. This is close to the 15th-year anniversary of his passing on September 29th, 1998. He passed away at the West L.A. Kaiser Hospital. He had suffered a heart attack and a variety of strokes. He also is credited in his tenure as mayor from '73 to '93 of really pulling together a collection of suburban neighborhoods and making it a world-class city. Many people are fully aware that he was the first black mayor in the city of Los Angeles, third-largest city in the United States. But he also was a person that grew up very meager means, born in Calvert, Texas. Father was a sharecropper, his grandfather was a slave, and he had a remarkable career. He spent over almost 50 years of his life as a city employee, 21 years as a police officer, 10 years as a council member, and 20 years as a mayor. And during that tenure as a police officer, he became an attorney. And so he certainly made an impact, whether we look at the legacy of downtown, or the airport, or in many instances, how the city was run with tremendous emphasis on the lack of discrimination, whether it's minorities or females. He made an impact that should be remembered. One of the things that also, very recently, a couple of people are going to be doing a documentary on his life that will be on the public airwaves, and very shortly, they will be putting together a short version of that that will be in every high school's, and I don't think they call it civics now, but government class. And so these are things that are going on, and hope that people not forget the impact that Mayor Bradley made on this city.
Thank you. Any more adjournings before I call on Mr. O'Farrell? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it has been a very difficult week for the Department of Recreation and Parks. They've lost two individuals this week, Mr. Scott Tux Monzingo and Mr. Julius A. Island. It is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn council today in their memory. I'll start with Mr. Monzingo. Scott Monzingo began his employment as an electrician with the Department of Recreation and Parks in July of this year. He had previously worked for the Department of General Services as a hiring hall employee from September '07 until May of 2011. Scott had also been an electrician with International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW, Local 11, for about 20 years. Scott is survived by his two daughters, Samantha, 16-years-old, and Kaylee, 17-years-old, and his father, Frank Monzingo. Unfortunately, Scott Monzingo passed away this past Tuesday, on September 24th, when he was fatally struck by a car while crossing the street, Silver Lake Boulevard, on duty. And I'm just so saddened about this. And we have an observance of this, Mr. John McCrory, general manager of Wreckin' Parks, Mike Schull, AGM, and Mr. Ramon Barajas. And we also have joining us today, Mr. Julius A. Island's widow, Laura Island, in honor of her husband. Julius Aubrey Island, better known as Jay, was born August 18th, 1953. He worked for the Department of Recreation and Parks for 17 years. He began working with the department in 1996 as recreation assistant, and later appointed to full-time position as gardener, caretaker, in February of 1997. Jay was soon promoted to senior gardener in January of '99 at Pan Pacific Park, and park maintenance supervisor in October of '07 in the Lincoln Park District. During his time with the department, he received a notice of commendation in 2010. Julius was married to Laura Island, who currently is a recreation supervisor in the Department of Recreation and Parks Metro Region Griffith District. They had twin daughters, Ashley and Amber, 18-years-old, who also worked for the department part-time, and a son, William Island, who's 14. Julius Aubrey Island passed away at the age of 60 from his battle with cancer on Sunday, September 22nd, 2013.
Yes, without a doubt. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Members, this meeting is adjourned.